Hi, good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. My name is Neelam Gupta. I use she/her pronouns. I am in the Clinical Supports Integration and Workforce Unit at OHA in the Health Policy and Analytics Division, and I will pass it on to my colleague, Joe Bergeron.
Oh, thank you. Joe Bergeron, you see him pronouns, and I am the Behavioral Health Workforce Pipeline Coordinator. May we have Leah Festa?
Hi, everyone. Leah Festa, she/her, worked in the same unit, and I am the Healthcare Provider Incentives Program Coordinator. And I will pass to Jill.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jill Boyd. I also use she/her pronouns, and I am also part of the Healthcare Provider Incentives Program and the Clinical Supports Integration and Workforce Unit, and I have been here for over a month, so I'm still trying to figure out all the titles and everything. So happy to be here. Thank you. Who else should I pass it off to? Joe, did I already? Joe, do we do you already?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, Terrence, let's do you. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Grant Rising, Terrence Saunders, he/him/his for pronouns, Behavioral Health Workforce Equity Coordinator with our Behavioral Health Division. And I'll pass it over to Greg Bledsoe.
Good morning, Greg Bledsoe. I'm the Women's Services Coordinator in the Addiction Treatment Recovery and Prevention Unit. And it looks like Andy Davis.
Thanks, Greg. I'm Andy Davis. I'm the leading analyst for the Healthcare Workforce Reporting Program. We're on your agenda today as well, and I use he/him pronouns. I will pass it off to one of the other analysts on our program, Meredith Hawley.
Hi, good morning. My name is Meredith, she/her pronouns, and I am another analyst on the Healthcare Workforce Reporting Program at OHA. I can pass it over to Liza.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm Liza Root. I use she/her pronouns. I am the HIPSA and National Health Service Core Specialist with the Primary Care Office. And I apologize, I can't see everybody on the call, so if someone who hasn't gone yet, if they could take over.
How about John McElfrush?
Good morning, everyone. John McElfrush. I am the Oral Health Workforce Coordinator in the Primary Care Office at OHA. Thanks, Laura. I don't see anybody else that hasn't gone from OHA on my screen.
Laura, I think Chris Demars is also on.
Chris, are you here? I know I saw you pop in.
This is Chris Demars. Sorry, I'm not able to be on video. This is Chris Demars. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the Director of the Delivery System Innovation Office.
Thanks, Chris. And Bob, I see you're on now. If you would like to introduce yourself. You're muted, Bob.
Sorry about that. I'm Bob Lieberman. I'm a committee member, just starting my third term, maybe, second or third term. Happy to be here, so I was late.
No problem. Okay, committee members, have I missed anyone?
Laura, there are two other staff, OHA staff, Piper and Craig as well.
Oh, Craig. Craig, would you mind introducing yourself, and then we'll have Piper?
I'm Craig Mossback. He, they, I just accepted a new position in the Office of Equity Inclusion as a Behavioral Health Equity Analyst. But as an economist and health policy analyst in HBA, I did a number of projects in the healthcare workforce arena.
Thanks, Craig. Piper?
Hi there. I'm Piper Block, she/her pronouns, and I'm the Research and Data Manager for Health Analytics.
Perfect. Thank you. I think we've got everybody. All right. Thank you all for being here again. We will now open it up for public comment. I know Dale introduced himself in the chat. Dale, if you are ready, we can give you about three to four minutes of public comment, and I will turn it over to you.
Okay, hi, thanks, Dale Hodges. I'm getting pronouns. I'll have them next time we meet. I'm a guy, he/him seems familiar, but I don't know what it means yet. And I say that from my heart, by the way. I'm not being glib. I'm here just to ask you as a group and as a consciousness, if you will, to lobby advanced health and help them recognize diet as a critical part of this trauma story that we're trying to address. It just seems, it's, yeah, that's all I got to say. We've got this systemic drama, trauma going through our community here in Coos County. And the CCO doesn't seem to be capable of getting the idea that our diet is more critical than they're able to see because the doctors aren't recommending any dietary changes. I'm not the best at articulating in these things, but that's what I'm trying to say. Thank you. That's it for me. Thanks.
Okay. Dale, if you wouldn't mind putting your contact information in the chat. We're getting ready to go through the Community Health Assessment Process for Curry in Coos County. I don't, I work mainly in Curry County. I don't work in Coos, but we're working closely with Advanced Health, and we might be able to use some of your input if you are willing.
Okay, yes, then I would go and say that my own life's experience has been mitigated by gardening and diet and breath. And so, yes, I will put that in the, what'd you say, the chat. Thank you so much.
Chat box, yes.
Absolutely. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for your input, Dale. Okay, we are a couple minutes behind. We are now going to turn it over to Leah, Jill, and Jill, I think you're on, but I don't remember if Jill introduced herself. You can, Jill, when we turn it over to you. And Neelam, who they are going to give us a presentation on the evaluation of the Healthcare Provider Incentive Draft Report, and so I will turn it over to you three.
Great. Thank you so much, Laura. I know Jamie is getting up the slides. We're so pleased to be here this morning, and thank you all for joining us for this special meeting today of the committee to to share with you all the findings from the report and to get your input and also to share with you an approval timeline. Jamie, are you able to pull up the slides?
Yes, just give me one second. Hit the wrong button. I closed them.
Okay, all right. And so, you know, as Laura mentioned, we have, you know, the two staff that work on the program who are going to be co-presenting this morning with me, Leah Festa and Jill Boyd. Great. Thank you so much, Jamie. If you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. So, you know, we're going to provide a background on healthcare provider incentive programs in Oregon. The, provide an overview of the various incentive programs, then lessons learned and considerations going forward, a proposed approval timeline, and then ask for your questions, comments, reflections on the information we presented. Next slide, please. And so, we're going to start with giving you a background on healthcare provider incentive programs in the state, recognizing that we have some new committee members. We have also some committee members who are very well grounded in this information as well. So just to provide some background and context. Next slide, please, Jamie. So the Oregon Legislature passed House Bill 3261 in 2017 that requires the Oregon Health Policy Board through OHA and its partners to create the Healthcare Provider Incentive Fund. That fund took multiple funding streams for provider incentives and put them into a single pool known as the fund. Some of those incentives had existed for a long time. Some of them were newly created. And that fund is administered in collaboration with the Oregon Office of Rural Health, or ORH, at OHSU, and we have several colleagues joining us from ORH this morning. The second, you know, requirement is that that OHA conducts a healthcare workforce needs assessment every two years, which is due by February 1st in each odd-numbered year and provides proposals to address the needs with fund programs. And we had a special meeting last month where our contractors from Oregon State University provided an overview of that report, and that report is going to be shared and approved at the Oregon Health Policy Board Meeting on January 10th. And then lastly, and this brings us to this presentation, is to evaluate the effectiveness of state financial incentive programs. This evaluation is required every two years, and the purpose is really to examine the recruitment and retention of healthcare providers to practice in rural and medically underserved areas of the state. Next slide, please. And then, just to give you some additional background on the evaluation, this report is the third report on the effectiveness of incentives. It summarizes data from the fund's inception in 2018, after the bill was passed through June 30th of 2022. Unless it's otherwise noted, there are a few incentives for which we have data that goes back a little bit further, and it really includes data on three fund initiatives. The first is the Healthcare Provider Incentive Program, which includes four incentives: primary care loan forgiveness, loan repayment, scholarships, both for OHSU and non-OHSU students, and then a rural medical insurance subsidy. The second initiative is the Healthy Oregon Workforce Training Opportunity Grant Program or HOW-TO. And then the third initiative, which is more recently created by House Bill 2949 and House Bill 4071, is the Behavioral Health Workforce Initiative. In addition, it also includes data on two incentives that are separate from the fund: the Rural Medical Practitioner Tax Credit Program and Behavioral Health Workforce Stability Grants from House Bill 4004, which was passed in the 2022 short session by the legislature. Next slide, please. And so, this provides, you know, an overview of the positive impact that financial incentives have had on healthcare workforce diversity and access to care. This is where we have available data. It has impacted at least 3,604 healthcare students and practicing professionals to be able to provide services in rural and medically underserved Oregon. There are some incentives for which data is not available. You'll note, in particular, the Behavioral Health Workforce Stability Grants. You know, that was a very major investment that you'll hear more about later. We don't have data on that yet, so this is just for, you know, the available data that we had. Next slide, please. And then, just wanted to take a moment to address real D data collection. It is in the process of being fully implemented. Data collection began at different points in time for some incentives during the past reporting period. When the real D form became available, the programs started with collecting race and ethnicity data using the real D form. Language data was collected, but not using the real D questions, and then want to acknowledge that disability data was not collected for any incentives. We are working with OHA data experts from both the real D and health analytics teams to validate available real D data for the final report. And really to, you know, ensure we're representing communities accurately and to demonstrate the impact on diversifying the healthcare workforce. So, in the interests of making sure that we have the data accurately, we're not presenting it today, but we do plan to provide an update at the next full healthcare workforce committee meeting after the report is approved in March. Next slide, please. And then this provides you an overview with the funding for financial incentives, the healthcare provider incentive program, which started really, the legislation was passed in 2017, but the program really started in 2018, was funded with $14 million that were obligated in the 2017-2019 biennium. In the last biennium, there was another $17.3 million that was obligated. And then in this current biennium, there was $22.5 million obligated. The HOW-TO grant program has 34 awarded projects totaling just over $23 million in four rounds of funding. Awards really range from, you know, a high of $1 million to around $300,000. These are three-year grants with an average grant award amount of $681,000. The Behavioral Health Workforce Initiative was a major investment in really addressing the severe behavioral health workforce shortages and an attempt to diversify the behavioral health workforce. It allocated $60 million towards provider incentives. And then, I apologize that that next bullet is a typo. It should be $20 million allocated for supervised clinical experience. So, the 60 plus 20 equals 80 total. Out of that funding, we review the amounts that were awarded in loan repayment and in one round of clinical supervision grants. And Jason, I saw you asked a question. We just asked because there's a lot of information in this presentation, if you would allow us to answer the questions at the end. And then lastly, the Behavioral Health Workforce Stability Grants were a major investment, 130, over, a little over $132 million awarded to 162 behavioral health organizations. Next slide, please. And then, you know, expansion efforts to increase equity and address pandemic challenges. You know, really, since the previous evaluation, OHA has made major changes in order to provide flexibility for awardees to practice via telehealth. That was a rule change that was made to our administrative rules. There was also, you know, as we reviewed on the previous slide, major additional funding for behavioral health workforce, both through the Healthcare Provider Incentive Program and those additional legislative investments I just mentioned. And then, you know, we also expanded the collection of enhanced race and ethnicity data using real D categories. We also increased the focus on equity by convening provider work groups from communities experiencing inequities and making changes to various aspects of the program. And then lastly, you know, we developed, started to develop an anti-racism approach to support providers of color by examining information on experiences with racism, implicit bias, and microaggressions. Next slide, please. And then I'm going to turn it over to Leah, who's going to provide an overview of the Healthcare Provider Incentive Program set of incentives.
Good morning, everyone. Just quick reminder, Leah Festa, she/her, and I am the Healthcare Provider Incentives Program Coordinator. And I'll take you through some of our incentives. If you want to get to the next slide. We're going to start with primary care loan forgiveness, which provides students enrolled in participating primary care education and in a rural training track, forgivable loans for tuition and fees. And that's in exchange for a service obligation to an approved practice site. So for those that are kind of new to our programs, I'll give a brief overview of each of these incentives. So, there have been five annual award cycles since the inception in which our program took this over administration. Of the 51 students, so far 38 have started or completed their service obligation. Since 2019, the number of students seeking loan forgiveness has exceeded the available award funding, as you can see in this figure on the right of the slide. And this really is not expected to change in the future. If anything, now that we're coming out of COVID, we expect potential increases. And in terms of data, we, in 2021, began using the modified real D form to collect race/ethnicity information, and we did not collect language and disability data. Next slide. Dig into this a little more. So, there's a lot of information here. This incentive awarded 2.6 million across five annual award cycles, as I said, to about 51 future clinicians. And these programs are OHSU, Pacific University, and Western University of Health Sciences, College of Osteopathic Medicine of the Northwest, so Comp-Northwest, we call it. And this table summarizes incentive recipients by the school and program of study. As you can see, most students were enrolled in primary care disciplines with a small proportion in oral health at OHSU. Next slide. Loan repayment. This incentive awards recipients by repaying up to 70% of qualifying student loan debt in exchange for a service commitment at a qualifying site. And so far, there have been 17 quarterly award cycles. In the past two years, the number of practicing professionals seeking loan repayment has increased and exceeded the available award funding, as you can see in this figure on the right. As practicing professionals continue to seek relief from debt burden, we really do expect this trend to continue as well. Our staff, you know, along with Office of Rural Health staff, shout out, we've expanded the loan repayment incentive to behavioral health professionals in July 2021 and awarded over three cycles that amount of funding. But with the passage of House Bill 2949, as Neelam was mentioning, OHA transitioned our behavioral health awards to the Behavioral Health Workforce Initiative Team in April of last year. In terms of data, we collected, we launched the collection of race/ethnicity and language in this last biennium, but we're still working towards, towards that. Next slide. And I know I'm going through this very quickly, so we do have time for questions at the end. I just want to get through all of the information. This incentive, as you can see in this table, has obligated more than 16.7 million to 295 practicing clinicians in Oregon. This table provides the summary of incentives by discipline and award mount. As you can see, basically, the takeaway is here, 39% of our recipients were in primary care. About 40% were in behavioral health, and 20% were in oral health. Next slide. So, our loan repayment map, this just shows a quick distribution of incentive recipients. The report has maps that break out our different primary care, behavioral health, and oral health recipients and where those are located. But this gives you a quick snapshot. You can see there's coverage in most counties, with the exception of a few. So that's a quick snapshot of the map. Next slide. Loan repayment provider experiences. So, OHA Healthcare Reporting Workforce Program staff, they conducted a qualitative analysis of a survey conducted by the Office of Rural Health in July 2022 on our loan repayment recipients' experiences with this incentive. And the survey results revealed a few themes. So, first of all, most respondents expressed overall satisfaction with loan repayment, good news, resulting in what we heard was lightened financial and mental burden, allowing them to live and work comfortably in an underserved community. Other respondents, however, did note room for improvement in the administration of our loan repayment. So they struggled with things like accessing assistance from staff and encountered some difficulties with invoicing and delays in payments. So as a result of that, we have OHA and Office of Rural Health hired more staff to address the increase in contracts that we've received. And respondents also had different perspectives in describing their prospects in the healthcare field. And respondents commented on experiences with racism, implicit bias, or microaggressions. This was individually with patients or within the practice. And for this survey, we have 32 people take it. Next slide. Scholarship programs. So first of all, the Healthcare Provider Incentives Program includes two scholarship incentives. And first, we have Scholars for a Healthy Oregon Initiative, which provides full tuition, applicable fees to OHSU students in four clinical programs. Recipients agree to one year of clinical service in an approved rural Oregon practice site in exchange for each year of funding granted to them, plus one year. So this incentive is funded to OHSU to administer under an independent governing statute. There have been eight annual award cycles since 2014. Of the 156 students receiving scholarships, 66 have started or completed their service obligation. And for data, our race/ethnicity data is collected. Language and disability were not collected during this reporting cycle. And the table on this slide is really summarizing students who received these awards. So, quick snapshot, one-third of recipients were nurse practitioners. Nearly a quarter of recipients were medical doctor or physician assistants, and the remaining 19% were dentistry students. All right, next slide. So we have showy like. So this is Scholars for a Healthy Oregon Initiative like. It was modeled after showy, is what we call it, to provide equitable scholarships for students at non-OHU educational institutions. So this is a relatively new incentive. Since 2019, there has been one award cycle. We had about 1.35 million awarded to 16 students. Four of these students have entered into their service obligation. And the table on this slide summarizes students receiving those awards by program of study. If you can take a quick peek at that. And for data, we did not collect real D data, but like I said, we are working towards this in our new biennium as well. And I'm going to pass it off to Jill.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. Thanks for having me. Again, I'm Jill Boyd, she/her pronouns. And I am also part of, I am the Healthcare Provider Incentives and Project Coordinator, also part of Leah and Neelam's team. And I'm located in eastern Oregon, so my past life, I've seen a lot of the work that has come out of this program office has been really reflected in my past position. So happy to be part of this team. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Rural Medical Insurance Subsidy. This is the last of the healthcare provider incentive programs programs. And so, this was launched under House Bill 3260, which is almost over two decades ago, and it provides malpractice premium subsidy payments for doctors and nurse practitioners practicing in rural areas to provide essential services such as obstetric care. Practicing in rural areas to provide essential services such as obstetric care. We currently work with nine insurance carriers that make payments to practicing professionals at a percentage of their malpractice premium. And we've also added, we added, we had eight, we've added one insurance carrier since the last evaluation. Qualifying providers must serve at a location that meet the OHAs, the Oregon Health Authority's definition of real practice. And we, again, did not collect RLD data for this. The table on the side shows the rural medical insurance subsidy enrollment from 2018 through 2021. And as you can kind of see, we saw some dips that could be due to the pandemic. Other things, but we're starting to see it kind of pop back up again in 2021. Next slide, please. So this slide is really talking a little bit about the four different programs and just the impacts in the areas for improvement. So our healthcare provider incentive program has made some progress in improving the provider FTE over the the years, and we've had seen some reductions. So parts of that eroding progress, we think is constituted to lack of healthcare system infrastructure. We're learning about the fragility of the healthcare system as a whole. And of course, the COVID-19 pandemic has had significant impact on all of our primary care workforce. Of course, we have more data that's going to be needed to be collected. As you've noticed in the slides above, we have a lot more things to look at, but really some other observations and themes that we've been seeing through the use of the healthcare workforce reporting program data and other anecdotal observations is that there is a high demand. As we've seen in slides above, with loan repayment and loan forgiveness for these incentives and for a need for debt relief. And there's a large number of people that have been leaving the program due to various personal and professional reasons that may or may not be directly related to the global pandemic. I just wanted to note that the slide, or the table rather, of the primary care FTE and direct patient care by service area. So again, we looked at the healthcare workforce reporting program data. And of those, it's really hard to see on my screen, so I apologize, but it is in the actual report as well. There are 16 priority areas that have had no primary care providers or an acute shortage. So from that information, we've kind of gathered that six areas have seen an increase over time. Seven have experienced a decline and then three areas have had no, no provider changes. So again, we want to be able to look at some more data to kind of look at whether or not these reductions were related to the pandemic or to the long-term stability of the healthcare infrastructure. Next slide. And I'm seeing some comments in the chat and I don't want to discount those, but again, we will address those at the end of the presentation. Thanks. So I'm going to move on and talk about our lovely, very long acronym called the Healthy Oregon Workforce Training Opportunity Grant Program. Can you go to the next slide, Jamie? Thank you. So this is commonly called how to. And this was established in 2018 by House Bill 2361. As an Oregon Health Authority, Oregon Health Science University collaboration, under the policy direction of the Oregon Health Policy Board. How to supports innovative, community-based healthcare workforce training projects that have been focusing primarily on the increase of diversity and culturally responsive workforce. Focusing to fund workforce expansion and medically underserved and rural frontier communities. And of course, addressing the workforce shortage areas. Next slide. So again, this is a little bit of a tiny slide, so I apologize, but this is really just wanted to show the different how to workforce training programs. So you'll see we have had, under the new workers trained, 345 new workers have been trained across the various disciplines, including community health workers or traditional healthcare workers, peer support specialists. And psychiatric mental health nurse practitioners. Under the incumbent worker trained with additional skills. That one, we had a lot of training programs to increase the skills such as interprofessional integrated care, behavioral health fellowships and continuing education. So you'll see that 666 and that 990, those are pretty large numbers. Those are, it is kind of difficult to quantify. These grantees were not required to report unduplicated numbers because of the various numbers of trainings. So there might be some duplication in the actual number of individuals that participated in that program. And then at the very bottom, we do have a high school students participating in the pipeline program. We have had 32 high school students receiving dental care, dental career exposure. And next slide, please. So as with every program, we do want to try to continually improve and get better at the work that we're doing. And we also wanted to highlight some expanded equity efforts. So in 2022, we have included a more streamlined equitable application process. That includes expanding access for projects less under the $300,000 mark to support smaller organizations. We've developed a scoring rubric with an increased weight for health equity criteria. We've provided expanded support for program applicants. Ensured community member participation in the application review and expanded nondiscrimination requirements. Additionally, we've provided grantees with additional technical assistance and support. As such as updating the semi-annual progress reports to address health equity, anti-racism and trauma-informed workspace issues. And then we've also held our first annual all-grantee meeting for information sharing and networking. Next slide, please. Additionally, we've enhanced communication plans to reach a wider breadth of providers and organizations, so they know a little bit more about this program and the offerings. We've also begun recruitment to the how-to advisory committee to include more diverse representation. So I think emails have been starting to go out from Joe and Mark Overbeck on that. And started to develop a standardized reporting metric for semi-annual reporting. So since I'm so new, those are my slides that I get to present on, and I'm going to pass that back over to Neelam.
Thanks, Jill. I'm going to provide an overview next of the Behavioral Health Workforce Incentives. And recognizing that our colleagues in the Health Systems Division Behavioral Health Office are really taking the lead on these and can answer more specific questions. The Behavioral Health Workforce Initiative, or BHWI, had one cycle of loan repayment awards in April of 2022. Just as a reminder, you know, this incentive was allocated $60 million for a variety of different provider incentives and really began with loan repayment. As a transition from the Healthcare Provider Incentive Program, Behavioral Health Loan Repayment Program to this new set of funding. It collected real D race ethnicity data and second language data, but did not collect disability data. And you will see here that 25 practicing professionals were awarded across various disciplines, including therapists and counselors. And there was a rule change made to the Healthcare Provider Incentive Program in 2021 that allowed qualified mental health professionals and qualified mental health associates to be awarded. Also, some nursing professionals and then lastly, social workers were awarded. And next slide, please. And then also one cycle of clinical supervision grants were awarded out of the $20 million that were allocated to provide supervised clinical experience to associates or other professionals to gain credentials to practice. This one award cycle happened in February of 2022. And as you can see here, you know, a variety of different types of organizations were awarded for a total of 21. These awards supported 212 supervisees to receive supervised clinical experience so that they may gain credentials to practice. And then this didn't, this incentive did not collect real D data. I just want to mention for Behavioral Health Workforce Initiative incentives. That team has been incredibly hard at work and with the plan to obligate the entire $80 million by early 2023. Next slide, please. And then, you know, lastly, there are these Behavioral Health Workforce Stability Grants, which was launched under House Bill 4004, which distributed over $132 million in provider grants for staff compensation and workforce retention and recruitment. And there was the requirement that at least 75% of funds must be used for wages, benefits, bonuses and incentives to hire or retain staff. The legislation also directed OHA to provide nurses and behavioral health specialists to bolster pandemic-related workforce shortages and to seek federal funding. A final report is due from all 162 grantees who received this funding by December 30th of last year. So more information will be available about the impact of this historic investment in the next evaluation report. And this incentive also did not require real D data collection. Next slide, please. And then I'm going to turn it. Oh, I'm supposed to go over then the rural medical practitioner tax credit. So next slide. And this incentive has been offered since 1989. It's, it really is the first incentive that was offered well before the creation of the Healthcare Provider Incentive Program. And it allows eligible providers working in rural areas to receive a tax credit between $3,000 to $5,000 annually. The Office of Rural Health determines eligibility of providers to receive this credit. And the Oregon Department of Revenue confirms and processes the credit. Over the past 10 years, credits have been provided for a unique number of providers amounting to just close to 4,400 for an average of seven years. And as you see from the bottom table, and the number of eligible providers has slowly declined over the past four years. And there was no real D data collected. The top table shows you the eligible recipients by provider type. In 2021, there were 1,892 providers deemed eligible for this credit across a variety of different provider types. Next slide, please. So then, you know, you know, given all this information, I know there's a lot of information that we just reviewed, just wanted to provide some lessons learned and considerations going forward. Next slide, please, Jamie. We learned really that flexibility with provider incentive funds to meet community needs and increase access to care in an equitable manner will be important to long-term success. And as was alluded to earlier in the presentation, high demand really does exist for loan repayment, loan forgiveness and scholarships. As effective tools to address student debt burden. Which is disproportionately experienced by people of color and people from tribal communities. Partnering with practice sites serving communities of color and other historically marginalized populations. To continue to evolve, the reach and impact of incentives is critical. As I mentioned, we started to do this. I know our colleagues in the Behavioral Health Workforce Initiative have been doing this as well. And this is really, you know, allowed us to make really valuable changes to the program. The impact, you know, of racism, bias and microaggressions on incentive recipients is significant. And an area we started to delve into during this past reporting period and intend to do more work really to, you know, further develop our anti-racism approach. And then, you know, there are, you know, barriers to entry and advancement for people of color in the healthcare workforce. Which results in people not receiving culturally and linguistically responsive care. Next slide, please. Some considerations going forward, you know, which will come as no surprise. I'm looking at some of the questions we've received, you know, is the need to collect more uniform data and expand to other language, disability, sexual orientation and gender identity information in the next reporting period. You know, also to create this anti-racism approach to support providers and develop trauma-informed workspaces. Also, the importance of considering additional incentives and continue to create new ones. You know, one of our observations is high need exists for wraparound services such as housing and childcare. Our nursing workforce shortage study, as well as our experience with these incentives shows that additional work is needed around resiliency and well-being. And then lastly, you know, the importance of creating more intentional career pathways and advancement opportunities. Especially in certified and uncertified occupations and for those who want to remain in the field is really critical. Next slide, please. And then, you know, we wanted to review with you a proposed approval timeline and then take your questions and comments. So we are in the process of confirming the data with our real D and SOG data experts. We anticipate having that done by January 24th, at which time we will send the revised draft report to the committee for final review, your comments, and we will also ask for an approval via e-voting. The deadline for receiving your comments and finalizing the draft report will be January 31st. So that way we can send it to the Oregon Health Policy Board and be prepared to present the report for approval by February 7th. And then transmit the report to the legislature and share it more broadly via our website. And the next slide, please. And would love to hear, you know, what are your overall thoughts? Do the analysis findings and lessons learned and considerations going forward resonate for you? Is there anything that should be changed or added? And then we can, we can start to take the questions and here's the contact information for those of us who presented today. And then, you know, again, we are joined by many colleagues. Dr. Frederick Dayton, who's the Behavioral Health Workforce Development Manager, is unable to be here today, but he has some of his colleagues on to answer questions around the Behavioral Health Workforce incentives. And then we also have colleagues from the Oregon Office of Rural Health on.
Thank you, Neelam. Do you just, do you want to just take the
Thank you, Neelam. Do you just, do you want to just take the questions in the chat? I know we have about 10 minutes and before we move transitions to the next. Do you want, do you want to just go through the chat and take the questions?
Sure, sure. I, I see Jason, you asked the first question. Does the data in the, that first chart, the overview of the impact of the financial incentive programs include just unique recipients? And, you know, that's a really great point. You bring up Jason. It, it is possible that some of the providers in the healthcare provider incentive program incentives might also be receiving tax credit. So I don't know that we can get at who those unique providers are, but that is an excellent point. So thank you for raising that. Jason. I see a question around, from, from Paul around wanting to learn more about clinical supervision funding. Paul, do you have any specific questions around the clinical supervision funding that weren't answered?
Yes, only that I'm not sure how big those bits of, of funding are for each clinical supervisor, but I think this problem of training the workforce, you know, we're short of nurse educators. Part of the nurse workforce shortage has to do with not having educators. And statewide, there's a shortage of clinical supervision sites, which has actually caused OHSU's medical school to shrink its class size at a time of greater need. So wondering how we can translate whatever we've learned about clinical supervision in the behavioral health workforce arena to supporting clinical supervision more broadly across the state, especially in rural underserved areas. So just learning more about how is that funded? Where does the money go? How effective is it? That sort of thing, maybe not today, but for future discussion.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. And then I see you asked another question around learning more about the provider experience survey comments and wanting to see more of that data. We, we have a little bit more of that information in, in the report itself. I, I, I will say that we didn't receive as much as robust participation in that survey as we would have liked to. And I, I believe that was the first time that survey was conducted. So, you know, we learned some lessons around, you know, that, that survey. So if you have any specific suggestions or areas in which you'd like to see more information, when we repeat it, we could definitely include that.
Yeah, it looks, especially from the qualitative stuff, like there's a, it might be something we want to look into more in the future in some way that would get us more access to comments, especially the one from Prineville concerned me about microaggressions and bias. And how do we, someone mentioned wraparound services. How do we create environments that providers want to go to and stay in?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Paul, for those, for those comments. And that's, that's part of the, the work that the program plans to do in this, in this next reporting period. And I see, Dr. Chaudry, also you asked about the figure for oral and behavioral health providers. We can, we can definitely get you that information working with our colleagues from the Healthcare Workforce Reporting Program. I see, Dr. Hemmings, you asked about what contributed to inconsistency when collecting real data, a real D data. Some of the inconsistency had to do with our control over the data. For example, with the, with the tax credit, really that is, is meant to verify providers' eligibility. And I don't know if our colleagues from RH have any additional information. It, I, I will say, you know, it's, it's kind of a work in progress. And so, you know, we, our intention is to roll out more consistent real D data collection during, during the rest of this biennium and into the next biennium as well. And then your question around the, the showy data, I, I would have to get back to you on that because, you know, that is an incentive that was provided by OHSU to its students. My only reflection on that is that, you know, there's just more demand than available funding. I, I would have to ask our colleagues at OHSU who provided us with the data, if there are any reasons for those denials.
Neelam, I have a quick question, and this may seem very basic. So was the real D data questions on the 2021 applications when, when folks filled those out? Or did it, did it, did it start in 2022 with having those questions on there? Because, and I, I ask this because we're going through this with our community health assessment. You know, we were asked why we didn't collect the real D and SOG data in our last community health assessment, and that's because it wasn't contractually required then, and now it is. And so now we're incorporating it into so many of our questionnaires. So was this, could that contribute to the inconsistency with the data as it wasn't required previously? And it is now. I mean, I'm trying to wrap my head around, you know, some of the reasons why, why it would be inconsistent or not there.
You know, I don't know if, if Bill is still here and she wanted to, I, to respond to that bill.
And that's okay. If not, we, you know, I can follow up. I just am trying to understand in my simple brain.
Sure, sure. I mean, I think, you know, it was, it, it wasn't required from the healthcare provider incentive program to collect this data, but we recognize the importance of collecting it. And so we started with those incentives where we had the most direct control over collecting that data. And, and so it, it, it is definitely a work in progress.
Hi, this is Dr. Hemmings. So I, I, I guess my question here now is, do we now recognize how important that data is? I mean, if we're talking about inequities and we're talking about, you know, making sure that we are providing, you know, these programs in an equitable manner, kind of addressing the inequities that has existed. Do we recognize that collecting this information is crucial in terms of our goal in actually reducing inequities that exist in all of these various professions? Do we recognize that? Because I'm still not hearing that. I'm not sure I'm hearing that, that is, that there's a recognition of how crucial that data is.
Oh, absolutely. We definitely recognize, you know, how critical that data is. And that's why, you know, you know, our intention is to implement it in a more uniform fashion, you know, going forward.
Okay. I had, there's a second part to that question where I asked about what, why the inconsistencies. And the other part was, was any information collected that relates to real D? And if so, could that become available to us?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. So that was, you know, the, the plan was, we are in the process of just verifying that data with our partners from the Division of Equity and Inclusion and the Health Analytics Office. And our intention is to come back at the March meeting and share that data with, with the committee.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I couldn't agree more with you, Dr. Hemmings. Like that data is so critical to us being able to really make sure that our incentives are having the desired impact and to tailoring our incentives to the needs of those communities who need it the most.
I think we covered most of the questions, Neelam, in there.
Okay, great.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Sorry, it was, I had several questions. But, you know, someone can respond to me separately if we're out of time. But one question I did have is in terms of lesson learned. And I believe my question was, I'm assuming that this is not the first evaluation that's been done because a lot of these programs have been around for a number of years. Am I, is my assumption correct that there have been evaluations done prior to this one?
Yeah, I can answer that really quickly, Dr. Hemmings. So the first evaluation, this is the third evaluation of its type. But the first evaluation was done right after the program started. So that is very limited because there was just not a lot of data available at that time. The second, the, the last evaluation from two years ago, you know, was really the first one. And then this one represents a significant expansion. Just given, you know, the multiple workforce crises that we've experienced. You know, we really tried to compile all the available data and, and provide it in a, in a fashion that shared it with those who are really interested in this, in these topics.
Okay, so my question was regarding the evaluations that's been done. And when you talk about lesson learned, I wanted to know whether or not there has been any changes that's been implemented as a result of the lessons learned and whether or not there's been an evaluation of those changes that were implemented or not implemented. And I think going forward, you know, that would be something that's important to do. You know, in terms of, it's great that, you know, part of doing evaluation is to assess, right, how the program has worked. But we also want to know how we implement and to change the, the, the lessons that we are learning after we do these evaluations. And we still need to turn around and evaluate those changes once they're made to see whether or not they've had an impact. And I didn't see that. So maybe it's there, but I didn't see that today.
Thank you.
Dr. Chaudry.
Great, thank you. My, it'll be very quick. First off, I would like to say that I really appreciated the comprehensive data analysis and the presentation of it. It was really nice to kind of see everything kind of more from like 100,000-foot level, but then also get into the weeds a little bit on kind of what are the lessons learned. So really nice job to the team for that. I did have one kind of future consideration. And that is, you know, the oral health provider workforce has fundamentally changed over the last few years. Right now, as what was shared, there largely is a support provided for dentists and EPDHSs, which are essentially an advanced dental hygienist. And I was wondering if there might be an appetite to expand so that there are other oral healthcare providers that can have access to these, to these funds to help assist with their own, you know, student loan debt as they are practicing in these rural areas. And so what comes to mind is registered dental hygienists or others beyond that, like dental therapists, as that is a newer and more involved oral healthcare provider, which largely goes out into the rural community and provides care where there are no dentists or very limited dentists in that area. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you so much for that question. I mean, I think, you know, there, I know there are some workforce proposals that we will see probably come to the legislature that include some additional incentives funding for oral health workforce. And we also have, you know, some how-to grants that support various aspects of the oral health workforce as well as, we did a new round of showy-like scholarship grants, which potentially also can include some support for different aspects of the oral health workforce. I think you also raise an excellent point about, you know, the potential inclusion of dental therapists as well, you know, as a, as a new provider type that's currently existing under the dental pilot projects and is going to be fully implemented, I believe, in 2025, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, that's great to hear. I just wanted to wrap in, in a few of the areas that have been highlighted between the oral health workforce coming up to the legislature, the how-to grant and the showy scholarship, those do not include any support for dental, registered dental hygienists. Registered dental hygienist performs a lot of the primary preventive care for, for everyone. Like if you get your teeth cleaned, the dentist doesn't clean your teeth. It's, it's really the hygienist that does that, or even access through other forms of therapy, even through tele dentistry. And so I really would highly support an approach that we can maybe take within focused on, on these registered dental hygienists with having that ability to, to assist with their own student debt that, that, that they face and that they're holding.
I think that kind of ties into the comment I put in the chat, Dr. Chaudry, because, you know, we experienced this down here with the nursing program is, is my understanding that you have to have a four-year degree or a bachelor's to, to participate in the program. And we have some two-year nursing students that really would like to participate in this program, and they're not eligible because they only have a two-year degree. And I, I'm not sure, does it, if the registered dental hygienist is at a two-year or a four-year degree? Yeah, that's, yeah, that makes perfect. And I know we've talked about that.
Four-year degree.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, so we are capturing all the questions in the chat, just so everyone knows. And so if there's something that we didn't get to today, we can always take it up at the, the next meeting that we have on the 11th, which is next week. So, Neelam, I'm going to let you transition into the, the discussion around the allocation.
Sure, sure. So this is, this is a very related presentation. Jamie, if you wouldn't mind pulling up those, those slides. This is a, a request for reallocation of funds for the healthcare provider incentive program. Jamie, next slide, please. And we'll just provide you a little bit of background, especially for those of you who may not be as familiar with this request, as well as provide you with the equity framework, review the proposed allocation. Hopefully provide a few minutes at the end for discussion and questions and answers. And then ask for a vote because we would like to take this to the Oregon Health Policy Board at its next meeting on January 10th. So the healthcare provider incentive fund and the healthcare provider incentive program, again, you know, we, we just previewed this, were created under Health Bill 3261. Those funds and programs are administered by OHA in collaboration with Oregon Office of Rural Health. And those funds and programs Um, and those funds and programs, um, are, um, under the policy direction of the Oregon Health Policy Board. The policy board relies on recommendations from the Healthcare Workforce Committee and the Primary Care Office in making allocations each biennium. And, um, that's why we're here, um, before you today to request, um, an adjustment. Um, next slide, please. Um, and just as a reminder, I know some of you are very familiar with this. Last, or actually now, um, two years ago, um, the Healthcare Workforce Committee, um, had, um, engaged in, um, close to thirty different listening sessions, um, um, to, uh, develop, um, this equity framework. This list of guiding questions that you see here, um, really to answer the question, how do Oregon's healthcare workforce development efforts advance opportunities for communities experiencing health inequities? Um, this whole process started, um, at a December 2020, um, Oregon Health Policy Board meeting, where, um, the former, um, staff, um, who were part of the Healthcare Provider Incentive Program, Mark Overbeck, who, um, is, um, not here with us today. But I, I know many of you, um, have encountered, um, were presenting on allocations and were asked, you know, do you have, um, an equity framework that you use to determine these decisions? So this is really, um, you know, the framework that the committee had developed after doing those listening engagements that, guides, um, our resource allocation decisions and our discussions as a committee. Um, next slide, please. Um, uh, the Primary Care Office is requesting, um, these allocation changes to the Healthcare Provider Incentive Program. Um, the first is to reduce, um, um, the rural, um, medical malpractice insurance subsidy, um, given projected underspending, um, and to, um, take some of the cash balance from the fund and move it to the program. Um, and so those funds then would be distributed, um, amongst, um, loan repayment, given, you know, again, you know, we, we talked about really, you know, just the incredibly high demand and need for debt relief. Also, um, to, um, increase administrative costs, um, for, um, additional, um, needs for, um, Office of Rural Health, um, staff, um, to provide, um, oversight of, um, um, our large number of contracts. We currently have, um, 240 contracts, um, and increased, um, need for, um, focused marketing. Um, uh, we also, um, have, um, uh, added another staff person to the program. And then also, um, this time, um, for the Healthcare Workforce Needs Assessment contracted with Oregon State University. Um, and then we also have, um, this, um, unique one-time ask, um, that, um, we add $300,000 um, to provide matching funds for, um, uh, the Office of Rural Health has a state loan repayment program. This match will allow, um, approximately, um, ten practicing professionals to receive, um, these loan repayment funds. Um, otherwise, without these matching funds, um, uh, the Office of Rural Health will have to turn back, um, this money to the federal government. And so that's kind of a very, um, a high-level summary of, um, some of these changes that, um, we are requesting. Um, you'll see, um, in the, in the second column, you know, that, uh, you'll see the, um, proposed, um, allocation changes, and then on the last column, the, um, adjustments as well. Um, next slide, please. And then happy to take any questions. Um, and, um, we also, um, require a vote on this. So we can go forward to the Oregon Health Policy Board, um, and, and request their approval of this as well.
Do we have, uh, questions from committee members? Uh, Jason, I see your hand up.
Yeah, just a, a quick question. So is the only thing that's on the table then is the reallocation of funds? It's not expanding who, who is eligible for funds? Is that my understanding?
No, yeah, yeah, because the, um, um, you, you might recall, um, we had conducted, um, an e-vote for, um, another increase, in loan repayment, given just, you know, the, the, um, high demand for the incentive back in July. Um, we went before the Oregon Health Policy Board to request that increase, um, at its August meeting. Um, and, you know, we, we're, we're back today to, you know, ask for some additional reallocations.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from com- committee members? I am not seeing any hands up. Jamie, I don't know if you can check as well, or Neelam, I don't see any. Oh, Dr. Chaudry, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So just, you know, I know that, you know, this, the, uh, the intent right now is to seek approval. You know, I just would like to plug again, if there is a way or means to allow for other oral health providers to be, you know, to have access, um, to these funds. I really think it would go a long way in order to support the workforce, um, and particularly the care of, um, of, of, or, you know, more underserved Oregonians. I'm not sure exactly how to add that or where to add that, or even if we can add it, but, um, you know, from an oral health perspective, I think that would be the right thing to do.
Um, thank you, thank you, Dr. Chaudry. I think that would require, um, a, a rule change. And so the, you know, I would, then the next time we, um, do a rules advisory committee, we'd be happy to, um, include, include you and others from the committee to, to provide that input.
Okay, and when would that be, uh, next year? Or later this year?
Um, it probably would be, it probably would be, we usually, um, do rules advisory committees about once a year for, for the program. So we, we don't have one planned right now, but, um, once Mark is back, we will, we will talk about it from his vacation.
Neelam, can, can I add something? Um, this is Elena Shablaski. I lost power, so I missed about ten or fifteen minutes. I'm sorry if I'm reiterating anything. But, um, to, to your point, Manu, I, I know that John McElfranch, who's on the call, so maybe he could add commentary here, was looking into possibly expanding, um, incentives to dental assistants and hygienists, and I don't know what the status of that is. So it might, the wheels might already be turning on that. John, could you add anything if you're still on?
Yeah, thanks, Elena. Um, I have had some conversations with the F S on this topic, and I don't believe that expanding the type of providers that are eligible things like loan repayment requires a rule change. Um, I think it would just require a few updates to the program. So obviously that's up to Leah and Jill coordinate the program, but, uh, we are continuing those conversations and hopefully making progress soon.
Great, thanks.
Feel free to add anything to that.
I, I'll just add, I think that the one, um, sort of nuanced part of our conversation was acknowledging the money is one tool of an incentive, and there are other versions of incentive as we look at the lower ultimate tuition and cost burdens of dental assistant and hygiene training programs. There might be other barriers such as location or time, things like that. Um, and so I think that was a part of our conversation is looking at what is the best way to incentivize pursuing those training programs? Money might be a part of it, and there might be other ongoing parts of our work that are important to continue to consider.
Very good point, Elena. Thank you. Are there any more questions? Oh, Jason?
Uh, I, um, could you explain again the OHSU state loan repayment program match? I, I know you didn't quite follow what that program is all about, what that money is used for?
Yeah, um, this is, um, a, a, a federal, um, program, and I know unfortunately that, um, it, it, Bill Thunder, who is here from, um,
Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Bill, would you like to give some more information about it?
Yes, I would. Hang on one second. There we are. All right, my mic is actually working. Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about, so the, uh, Oregon State Partnership Loan Repayment Program is partially funded by the Health Resources Service Administration, also known as HERSA. They provide, uh, each state with, um, with funding, um, for a grant that lasts four years. Each state must come up with matching funds for those federal dollars. And, uh, historically, Oregon has received matching funds from a, from providers, uh, uh, work locations, so from practice sites. Um, we had been pretty successful at that, uh, since the program's inception, uh, back in 2011. But, uh, during the times of COVID, um, we saw a, a dip in program participation. Uh, part of that was because practice sites had less money to contribute to matching funds. There was also some issues with, um, with instability in the job market. So, a- and also, at the same time, the state was adding more money to, uh, incentive programs, loan repayment programs that did not require matching funds. So that program took a little bit of a dip. So we ended up with some carryover dollars, which we've never had before. Um, and that equaled about $300,000 in carryover dollars. So we were, we were issued a no-cost extension from HERSA. And, um, the, we have until August 31st of this year to either expend those $300,000 in, uh, federal funds, which require matching dollars, or return them to HERSA. And with the $300,000, we intend to strategically market, um, places that are clinics that are located in the lowest quartiles of the Unmet Healthcare Needs Report. So we would be able to strategically use these dollars to provide loan repayment, uh, directly to providers working in some of the neediest areas of the state. So i- it's a really cool program, um, and the program, um, got a, an infusion of ARPA money. So after this $300,000, this would be a one-time infusion for the program. After this $300,000 is expended, um, for the next three years of the program, HERSA is not requiring matching funds. So this would allow us to, like Neelam said, make anywhere between, right around ten awards to quality clinicians working in, uh, uh, approved, we call it SLR, the State Loan Repayment Program, also known as SLR. So SLR approved practice sites working in some of the, the highest needs areas of the state.
And what's the connection with OHSU? Why is it OHSU-specific?
So that program, the State Loan Repayment Program, is not OHSU-specific. It is managed by my office, the, uh, Office of Rural Health, which is the state office of rural health that is located at OHSU. Um, and it is, uh, in no way OHSU-specific. We would be able to award people regardless of the school they went to, so long as they are working in Oregon at a program that is approved for the practice site. They would also have to be in primary care, working in an outpatient setting.
Great. Thank you very much for that explanation. Super helpful.
Yeah, that, I apologize. Maybe, um, we shouldn't have put OHSU, maybe we should have put, um, RH instead of. Um, but thank you, Bill, for that really, um, thorough explanation.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I think we are ready for a vote. Um, and if I could get someone to, uh, make the motion to approve the allocation request for the, um, provider, the reallocation. Is it allocation or reallocation, Neelam?
It, it, it is, um, a, a reallocation.
Reallocation, uh, for the Provider Incentive Program. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I will move. This is Paul speaking. I'll move that we approve the reallocation request, uh, as presented by, uh, the OHA staff.
And can I get a second?
Second, it's Elena.
Oh, thanks, Elena. Okay, so commit, committee members, if you are on camera, um, if you can, uh, everyone that's in favor, raise your hand or put your thumb up on the computer so we know. Anyone that's in favor, is anyone opposed to the reallocation or request? Okay. I don't see any, so we are good. Uh, motion passes. Um, and I know we're a little bit over time. I just wanted to give Andy just a, a, a minute or two to talk about the diversity, uh, report, an update on that, and then we'll go ahead and adjourn until next week.
Sure, thank you, Laura. Uh, I'll try not to keep you all. Um, so I just wanted to tee up the, uh, so I'm Andy Davis again. Uh, I'm the lead analyst for the Healthcare Workforce Reporting Program. Uh, we have a deliverable, uh, for the, uh, Health Policy Board, uh, that's coming up in the beginning of February, and.
Did we just lose Andy?
We did.
We just, we just lost him. Okay, I think, um, I think what Andy was just gonna say is, uh, you know, we're, we're gonna talk about the diversity report. So he just wanted, we just wanted to keep it on everyone's radar, because we will be discussing that next week. Um, so if there are no other comments, questions, um, discussion, we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting, and we will see you all next Wednesday, the 11th. Thanks, everyone. Have a really good day. Happy New Year.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you.